Call to all the city council meeting number 1264 Tuesday, January 19, 2016. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as far.
Clerk Paul Rolle, please.
Here.
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 The record show that all members of the president at the meeting. Item number two is minutes. You receive a copy of the minutes in your packets. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three on the agenda is presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first presentation being the January business of the month. The Economic Development Director, Mr. Brim, had asked me to do this. The January business of the month is yet another addition to our business community. Houston-based Lockwood International recently entered into a lease for what had been a vacant 23,000-square-foot building on Ashburn Drive, bringing 12 jobs to our community. This company provides one-stop shopping for valves, piping, and other industrial products. Lockwood is an industry leader with locations in Houston, Louisville, and now Forest Park. Indeed, it is one of the largest privately-held suppliers of valves and other industrial automation products in the country. Unfortunately, the manager of the local office could not join us tonight. The Economic Development Director will make sure that he receives his award, and we would like to welcome Forest Park Lockwood International to our community. The next presentation, Councilwoman Holt, would be the holiday decoration contest.
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year to you. These are the awards for the 2015 holiday decoration. The first person is James and Eleanor Sutherland for holiday spirit. Teresa Davis, holiday spirit.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it, and now are you working on this year?
Okay, thank you. David and Debbie Dixon, most decorative. Mark Vitek, best display of animated lights and music. Clifford and Viola Jenkins, most festive. Dorothy and Millicent Mickle, most festive. Bill Brocker, most playfully decorated. Robert Lewis, holiday spirit. Cesar, are you here? Cecil and Barbara Borger, most decorated. Betty Dunn and Sons, best outdoor display. Jason and Kelly Hoggatt, holiday spirit. Ronald and Vivian Smith, holiday spirit. Alan Snyder, holiday spirit. Mary H. Sims, holiday spirit. Ed and Pam Roberts, holiday spirit. Vanita Meadows, holiday spirit. And I would like to thank everybody that participated in lighting up the city of Forest Park for the holidays. Congratulations to all of you that received awards, and I look forward to more awards being given away next year. I'm sorry, this year. So as she said, she's thinking about this holiday season already. We can all do that and light up the city of Forest Park again. Again, congratulations and thanks to all of you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, item number four, communications from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your opinion and address, and then state your communications and questions. Council meetings are taped and recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council? And also, this is the time when generally, most of our audience would leave. You're welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, we would understand. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item number five, reports of standing committees. First of these reports is Community Development Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to welcome all the council members back and wish everyone a Happy New Year. Really, I just want to announce that the other piece I wanted to announce, I did attend the planning commission meeting earlier this month, and that would conclude my report. Oh, yes, thank you. There is a joint meeting of the school board and council this Thursday at 6:30. I'm correct. Is that correct, Sally?
6:30 is the meeting with council, and we posted that so long ago.
It's where? Here. Yes.
It's going to be here?
Yes.
In council chambers?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it'll be upstairs.
Upstairs. We have court at 6:00.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll get you that timing and confirm before the meeting's over. All right, but at 6:30. The meeting time would be 6:30.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, for the work session of the 25th, I have one item for you, Community Development liens. Do you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Next committee is Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle. Collins.
Yes, on or about January the 8th, I don't remember the exact date, I had Mr. Hodges and I believe it was members of the, was it the Transportation?
Public Works Department.
Public Works Department. They joined me on Lemon Tree to see an area that I suspect may be a candidate of sorts for being a non-parking area for public safety reasons, and I believe Mr. Hodges might go into detail on what happened there.
If you want me to comment. Basically, I believe Councilmember Collins has a concern about the traffic safety on Lemon Tree. At a certain area, there's a little bend in the road. Does create some sight distance issues, although we really haven't had any significant accidents or anything along that line. But the essence of it is, I believe, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, this is an item that you want to have on a work session to discuss, to determine whether or not there's any interest in taking any action of removing parking in that area. So that's the essence of it. It's just something that's significant enough that council as a whole would probably need to discuss it and make a decision based on staff findings.
I have a question. Mr. Hodges, can you give us the address of this area so as council, we can go look where the area is on Lemon Tree and be prepared for discussion?
Unfortunately, I don't recall the exact address. I can give you the address, but it was Councilmember Collins' item.
Yes, I don't have the exact address on me, but it's obvious if you're headed south on Lemon Tree from Kara Hill, you just look at, to your right, I'm sorry, to your left, and there is a curve, so to speak, in the road which causes the traffic coming north to have to veer to their left far and then come back over to come straight up the Lemon Tree hill. When you see that, there may or may not be a car parked on that curb, but if it is, it will be obvious because that car will appear to be in the middle of the street, parked in the middle of the street, from the top of the street. If there is not a car parked there, then you'll see the obvious curve, and that's the address we're talking about. You cannot mistake anything else on Lemon Tree for being the troubled spot other than that bend that we're talking about.
Thank you.
But I will get with you with an address.
Mr. Hodges, would you just send us an email as council to have an address so that we can check that out before the work session?
Right.
Thank you.
In the memo that we would do for council, we'll have specific.
Please, because I'd like to take a look at it. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing none, Councilwoman Cottle, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Collins.
Councilwoman Collins, I will add your item to the work session for the 25th. The next committee report would be Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
Thank you, sir. I just look forward to, this is a plea again out to all of the citizens of the city of Forest Park. We still have openings on the boards and commissions, and if you would like to serve on the boards, it's, some of them an hour a month, some of them are on an as-needed basis, and just would like to donate an hour or so a month to the city that you live in. I would appreciate hearing from you, and we can talk to you about what board or commissions you would like to serve on, as I said. Or you can go on our webpage and see the ones that are open, and if you're interested at that time, you can apply for the ones, and we'd be happy to talk to you about them. So again, I look forward to speaking to any citizens of the city of Forest Park that's interested in sitting on one of the boards. With that being said, that will end my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have anything to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, next committee report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilman Southall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report for public improvements and facilities this evening. Would entertain any questions anybody would have pertaining to that committee.
Any questions for Mr. Southall? Hearing none, the next, Mr. Southall, I have one item for you. It's amendment to Chapter 51 Stormwater Management Code. Do you have anything to add?
I would like to say that I would like to have another update as to where we are with the mall situation.
Mr. Hodges, I'll put that one on the administration for mall update for the next work session.
That completes what I would have.
Okay. Next committee report is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no report for public safety tonight, but I would like to wish all of our residents a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cottle, I don't have any direct item for you on the public safety. However, I am going to put under what, you can go under either yours or Mr. Southall, the Lemon Tree traffic concern, because that would be either public safety or public improvement. Okay?
Would it actually be a public improvement since public safety has to do with the Fire and Police Department?
It would have to do with, if there are signs, what we do with parking, but I'll real put it under one of yours, but probably, probably Mr. Southall.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda for discussion would be Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that our business recognition breakfast was held last Tuesday, on the 12th, over at one of our new taverns in Forest Park, Jack's Tavern and Restaurant, over on Smiley, who was one of the recipients, by the way. The other recipients were ACPI and ATR Distributing Company, Ameritas, one of our great civic partners, Cincinnati Testing Laboratory, Forest Park Restaurant, that has been in business for 50 years, so please patronize our local restaurant. New Saul Glass Works, which is new to Forest Park, and they actually made the awards this year. And then Kingdom Family Dentistry, and then Christina Murray from Home Depot. And so we congratulate all of those winners. They have all provided significant contributions to the city this past year, either in investments in expansion and building or in increase in jobs, and so we thank them very much.
Okay. Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Councilwoman Herbie, I don't have any items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 25th. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. The final committee report is General Government Relations and Communications. That is my committee. I don't have a report, but I would announce that the calendar for court dates for this year has been put together. I will make sure that each council member gets a copy of those dates, of that calendar in his or her box. I have no other report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Item number, Mr. Burns.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make one small announcement, and really, it's a thank you to the Cincinnati Chapter Parliamentary. Just recently, they held their, I guess it's a biannual training that they typically do for elected officials, and they've been doing that for several years. In, at our senior center, it's a great service that that group provides, and I just wanted to thank our clerk of council and the team that she works with to make that happen.
It was an excellent, excellent presentation. Well done.
Item number six is the mayor's report. I would just like to take this time to reiterate today. First of all, as other people have said, I wish everyone had a good holiday season and Happy New Year to you all, and thankfully, most of us returned safely. Secondly, the breakfast, the economic development, was as usual outstanding. I want to thank all of those staff people and the Economic Development Committee and its members, and specifically Paul Brim. Paul does an outstanding job. If you have not been to the new restaurant, Jack's, I would suggest that you do stop in just to say hello to the management team and employees. They did an outstanding job. Normally, you would not think of that place in terms of breakfast, but it was excellent. And according to statements made by the manager, that place is going to be enlarged. They're going to add some activities that we have not seen or had in Forest Park in any kind of tavern or bar. He's talking about an indoor, two-team, two-person volleyball court, amongst some other things. And I'm really looking forward to, not to play, I understand, but to watch as a spectator. And again, congratulations to all of the award winners. Without the businesses and the public, we would not be a city. I'm very appreciative of all of the businesses in Forest Park. They do an outstanding job. Thanks also to the Chamber of Commerce, who assisted us, and the young lady from Channel 12, who always serves as our mistress of ceremony, Lisa Bonis. Thank her for coming out in that, driving across the river to get to us that early in the morning. And thank those council members who were able to be there. The whole thing was just very, very good, and I'm very appreciative to everybody who took part in that. I do understand, however, that while most of us thought there, still some members of council who do have jobs, and they had to be at their jobs, so we know you would have been there if you could have been. That would end my mayor's report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none. Item number seven is the city manager's report. Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll report three things. First, we previously mentioned that Rumpke was looking at changes of routes that would have affected about 400-plus houses in Forest Park. And just to make sure you're aware, through right when, you should receive an update that they're holding off for a few weeks and actually implementing that. So again, if you've checked your emails, all that information is in there, but I want to make sure I brought it to your attention. They may still go ahead and make the route changes, but at least it won't be for a few weeks that they would do that. Second, we're going to provide you with a brief memo from our, probably our fire department, but it's work with our fire department, building department, and community development. Just to kind of update you and make sure you're aware that because of the age of the community, we are noticing that there are a number of homes that were originally built that are having some foundation problems. It's nothing that I think we can do directly, but I think it's something that as a council, one, you should be aware of it, and there probably should be some discussion because this represents a fairly significant, not fairly, it is a significant cost for the homeowners, and it has implications for Forest Park in terms of our neighborhoods in the long run. It's not something that is urgently against us right now, except that there are some homes that are experiencing this. And a lot of this is just a result of, quite frankly, poor construction years ago and some of the conditions under which they were constructed. But I advise council of this because, you know, over the years, it's going to have a fairly significant impact. So again, just making you aware that we as a staff are concerned about this, and we'll provide you a memo, and perhaps you'll want to undertake this as a concern. And there may be some way that some of these residents can be assisted, but these are private properties with major issues that are coming upon them. And finally, I would report that the departmental reports have all been completed. They've been included in the council packet, and they've also been placed on file with the clerk of council for public inspection. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Questions for the city manager. Mr. Burns.
Yes, two questions. One, I know that the reference to Rumpke changes, you know, based on the original dates, should have actually started or were projected to start like the first week in February. I would just ask that, right, encourage Rumpke to at least provide a three-week lead time in the communications for residents who are impacted, because we just got that email two days ago, yesterday, and had they gone as planned, I don't think they would have given ample time for ample communication. So I would just ask to give adequate lead time for that. And then the other item that I just wanted to talk about, or at least ask, when that memo comes out related to the aging homes, would staff be prepared to discuss that topic, you know, at the following work session, after the publishing of that memo?
Sure.
Okay. Nothing else for the city manager. We move to item number eight of the reports, the first of those being Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In a timely fashion, Mr. Southall has brought up an issue that's going to be addressed tomorrow. There is a meeting regarding the forest fair and the pending administrative appeal regarding the unsafe building order. As of now, all those items have been taken care of, except for the smoke suppression that is handled through the rooftop units, very expensive, almost what the property might be worth, if done correctly. But that's going to be the subject of the discussion tomorrow, how we can resolve that issue, and also, that property is still being marketed, and I believe at either the end of this week or next week, a developer is going to New York to meet with that owner. So there is some activity, but fortunately, from that extensive unsafe building order, we're just down to the one item to be taken care of. That's the end of my report, unless there is a question.
I have a question. Has the owner become any more realistic about what he will sell up for versus what he thinks his losses would be? Because that seems to be a hang-up.
I have no idea.
All right.
I know from what I've heard, he's being encouraged to be more realistic by his own representatives.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Hodges.
But overall, I don't believe there's any reason to be optimistic where we're at, you know, right now with Paul. We'd like to be, but his safety issues, he's had a history that I think is just repeating itself, that he does just enough to get by, and that's what we anticipate there. And in terms of being realistic, again, I'd like to be optimistic, but I don't want anybody to leave here, even though somebody may be even talking with him, and wouldn't leave here being very optimistic that he has seen the light and ready to make a move on the property or anything along that line. It's very unfortunate, but that's the summary. I don't want to be too optimistic with where we're at right now.
Mr. Hodges, I would hope to be optimistic, and he'll just tear that portion down so we can move on and move forward.
That would be fantastic.
I'm going to hope for that.
Anything else for the law director? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Next report is Clerk of Council, Mrs. Hoffman.
I would report the ordinance numbers 20-15 through 24, and resolution number 59-2015 to 63-2024, both selected quiet, and that includes 94.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am. Before going to new business, just want to mention one other thing here. While we've had what probably can correctly be termed a rather mild winter, the last few days have been cold, and there are some projections of snow tomorrow and or Friday. I would really ask and encourage our citizens to pay special heed to your driving and your parking. Now, every year, we talk about the fact that when you're talking about these assault trucks, these are very, very large vehicles. They do not have the ability to maneuver in and out of traffic and in and out between parked cars like you can in an old-style Volkswagen. So if and when we have a significant snow and the plows come down your street, remember that you choose to park on the street. If your car is plowed in and you can't get out, that problem is yours. That problem is not the city's. We can't come out and dig people out. There's too many. We have to plow the streets so there's no way else to put the snow. Just keep in mind, if there's predictions of a significant amount of snow, move your car into your drive or into your garage if you can. Over the next couple of days, you might want to go inside your garage and make some space in there where you haven't had space for the last 50 years, so that you can get your cars off the street if need be. And let's be safe out there. Leave a little earlier. If you got to be there at 8 o'clock and it takes you 15 minutes to get there, don't leave at 10 of 8. at 10 or 8:00. But let's just try to be a little safe and a little conscious of other people driving, and let's all drive defensively. Yes?
I think the fire department would also warn people, be especially careful about space heaters and heating your homes with fireplaces. Don't leave them untended. And, yeah, and heating houses with ovens. So, you know, if you have any question about safety, call the fire department and they will, they will help you out.
Moving on to item number nine, new business, is there a motion? Mr. Burns?
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only resolutions number 1-2016 through 3-2016. These resolutions were posted as required, six days as required.
It's been moved in second by Councilwoman Holt that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only resolutions number 1-2016 through 3-2016. Is there any discussion? There are none. Would clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Yes.
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 Motion to suspend passes 7-0. First item on the agenda under new business is resolution number 1-2016. Would the clerk please read that motion by title only?
Resolution number 1, 01-2016. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter the trade contract with New World Systems to provide additional modules to the existing enterprise and the existing system for the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of resolution number 01-2016.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 01-2016. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes. Staff's proposing that we enter this contract with New World Systems for an amount not to exceed $25,000 for training that's necessary to implement additional components of that system in the financial and human resources-related modules for use in connection with our citywide financial system. I'd urge adoption of the resolution.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 1-2016?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Resolution 01-2016 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is resolution, item B, resolution 2-2016. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number 02-2016. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Crow Harwath to provide consulting services relating to the tax increment financing districts and enterprise on the way to the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption, I would move adoption of resolution number 02-2016.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution number 02-2016. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes. As the title suggested, we are proposing to contract with Crow Harwath to review and advise us on our four tax increment financing districts. And as we mentioned in work session, they have performed work for us previously in 2011, and it was very beneficial in sorting out the complexities that are involved with the identification and filings and revenue collection and distribution of the tax increment proceeds that otherwise would end up going to several other governmental entities or districts. So we'd urge adoption of this resolution for this help.
Any other discussion on the resolution? There are none. Would clerk please call the roll on resolution 01, 02-2016?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 02-2016 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, item C, is resolution 03-2016. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number 03-2016. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with tax increment and social community, CBA, to provide the city council annual financial report.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number 03-2016.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 03-2016. Is there any discussion, or do we just do that? Now, Councilwoman Herbie?
Again, the title is explanatory, but I just want to mention that it is a budgeted item for a base amount of $19,800 plus expenses, and I'd urge adoption of the resolution.
Is there any further discussion on 03-2016? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll on that resolution?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 03-2016 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item D, resolution 04-2016. Clerk, please read this resolution in full.
Resolution 04-2016. A resolution to revise the purchasing policy as it relates to competitive bidding requirements for the city of Forest Park. Whereas, the revised code, section 73114, authorizes the city to execute a contract for equipment, services, materials, or supplies, and raise the competitive bidding limitation to $50,000. And whereas, the city of Forest Park would like to revise our more restrictive competitive bidding limitation, taking it from our self-proposed $20,000 to $35,000 for formal bidding procedures for any item costing more than $34,999.99, excluding professional services which are exempt by Ohio law. Whereas, it is the desire of city council to enact legislation which requires the city of Forest Park to formally advertise and obtain competitive bids for expenditures exceeding Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to formally advertise and obtain competitive bids and expenditures exceeding $34,999.99, excluding professional services. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of resolution number 04-2016.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 04-2016. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I only wanted to provide the rationale for this, that over the years, as inflation has gone up, and we found that this has become a cumbersome program for our smaller projects. And so the reason for raising this is, number one, we're well, still well within the state guidelines, but to ease that process for these smaller projects, so I'd urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I just have a question as it relates to the advertisement piece. Am I to understand, anything less than $35,000 would just go straight to the state bidding role or authorize vendors versus it being advertised publicly? How does, I'm just confused on how that would work, because it seems like it may limit exposure for smaller business to participate.
There, in your information on work session, it indicates that what we do right now is we put this out for three, we get three quotes. It's not a formal bidding process, but we get three quotes and make the decision from there.
So, but then for anything?
Between $500 and $34,999.99, you have to have three quotes before you can select a vendor.
So anything over $500 and up to $34,999.99, there would be a formal quoting process? It's just a limited, more expedient process?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 04-2016?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
No.
Cottle?
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution passes 6-1. Next item on the agenda is item E, a motion to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports. Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to receive the general fund summary reports as contained in the departmental reports.
It's been moved in second that we receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? There are none. Meeting of the giant.